I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the full Board of Education meeting for the School District of Waukesha on Wednesday, May 9th. And the rain has stopped, so we were able to walk in here dry. Hopefully, we'll be able to leave and still be dry. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brusink.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. And Sue, will you please verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Okay, to start off tonight, we're going to have our bright lights. Principal Ryan Pratt and Ryan Galante. I believe you have some very important people to introduce to us this evening with some very good news.
Yes, we do. Thank you for having us. Ryan and I are here tonight to talk about our National Merit Scholars. A little bit about the National Merit Scholars. To be considered for a National Merit Scholarship, semifinalists and finalists have to fulfill requirements to advance, I'm sorry, semifinalists, semifinalists have to fulfill requirements to advance to finalist standing. Each semifinalist submits a detailed scholarship application, which includes essays and information about extracurricular achievements, awards, and leadership positions. Semifinalists also have to have an outstanding academic record, be endorsed and recommended by a school official, and earn SAT scores or ACT scores that confirm their qualifying test performance or PSAT scores.
There's roughly a hun- or 1 million and a half students nationwide that take this test, and of that 15,000 are recognized as National Merit finalists based on their outstanding academic and personal characteristics. This year, three students from the School District of Waukesha have been recognized for the distinguished honor. From Waukesha West, we have Jordan Rodriguez and Andrew Zagorski. And from Waukesha South High School, we have Bjorn Larsson.
Andrew Zagorski. Andrew, come on up. Just a little bit about Andrew. Andrew has participated in 20 honors and AP courses and holds a 4.3 cumulative GPA, putting him in the top 10% academically among his graduating class. Andrew is a member of our National Honor Society and Wolverine Leadership Academy. Andrew has also played for our boys volleyball team over his four years and was a second team all-conference selection for us this past fall. Andrew plans to attend UW-Madison and is looking to possibly explore computer science. It's my pleasure to recognize National Merit finalist Andrew Zagorski. George, come on up, please. Jordan, Jordan Rodriguez has participated in 22 honors and AP courses and holds a 4.6 GPA, cumulative GPA, also putting him in the top 10% academically among his graduating class. Jordan is a member of our National Honor Society, the Wolverine Leadership Academy, Forensics, FBLA Key Club, Interact, and our Ignition Mentors. Jordan is currently playing tennis for the West varsity team. He plans to attend Georgia Tech, and he is also looking to possibly explore computer science. Again, it's my pleasure to introduce National Merit Scholarship winner, Jordan Rodriguez. Bjorn?
All right. This is Bjorn Larsson. Bjorn has participated in 20 honors and AP courses during his career at Waukesha South, currently holding a 4.44 grade point average, putting him well within our top 10% academically at South. Bjorn is currently the president of the Waukesha Core Robotics 20, or 202062, sorry, 2026 Robotics Team, and is the class president of the Waukesha South Orchestra. Within our orchestra program, Bjorn's also been doing exceedingly well. He won an exemplary performance, or he was nominated for an exemplary performance award at this year's WSMA competition. And outside of South, he's also been involved in the Milwaukee U Symphony, the orchestra, the, I'm going to get this right, Uvelade Choir, the Bel Canto Boy Choir, the Children's Choir of Waukesha, along with several other things throughout his career. Bjorn is planning on attending Grinnell College in Iowa to study biology. And with that, it's my great pleasure to introduce one of the greatest black shirts we've got at South, Bjorn Larsson.
Bjorn, Andrew, and Jordan, you can't get off that easy. I think this Board of Education is going to want to ask you a few questions. And if I'm wrong, boy, that'll be the first time. No. Any questions for these, these accomplished students of ours? Yes, Mrs. Reinacek?
The one thing that I could, I couldn't stop thinking about was, when do your parents see you? You're in so many activities after school, which are all wonderful. We're so proud of you guys, and way to represent us. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Mrs. Brusink?
I'm just so honored that you are graduating from the Waukesha School District. I believe so strongly that our school district does a phenomenal job or provide phenomenal opportunities for students, and you obviously have taken advantage of every opportunity possible to learn and be successful. I know you're going to do well in college, and best wishes, and know that we are so proud of you. But thanks to your teachers and to the administration for providing you with opportunities to excel. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
Just a couple of quick questions. Which musical instrument?
I play violin.
You play violin. And then you, you're obviously very active in robotics club. So what's the, what's the funnest part of that?
Well, I really love going to competitions. We have like 50 to 60, 40-member teams all competing with robots that they've spent the last like 10 weeks building and programming. And just the, the atmosphere of it, it feels like, I don't know, the World Cup or something. But it's just, it's really fun.
What did you say you're going on to study? I didn't, I missed that.
Biology.
Biology. So you're going to work with living robots instead of robot robots, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, here comes Westworld. Volleyball? Did you guys have a good season this year?
We've been rebuilding.
So you're not, you're not going to be part of next year's rebuild program, I take it? No.
They're on their way up, so that's good to see.
Okay, yeah. And then we got our computer science. So what, what attracts you to computer science?
To me, it's mainly just how much it's growing as a field, especially nowadays, they're trying to put computers in everything from fridges to watches to cars. So to me, the possibilities are endless. That seems like a field that I really want to go into.
So how many, I mean, there's, there's two of you. You're in robotics, you're in computer, you like computer science, and you're interested in computers too? So do we have a fairly robust coding program that you guys are experiencing or have experienced throughout the school district, or does it not feel that robust? When I say coding, you know what I mean by coding, I'm sure, yeah?
I mean, at, at South, we just, the academy just started their computer science principles, AP computer science principles class, and I know, I didn't take advantage of that this year, but I know a lot of people that did. And the engineering academy in general, I have a lot of friends in the academy, and they really love the ability to use and learn those engineering principles and do like hands-on projects that they can apply to the fields when they get out of high school.
Anyone else on the coding campus?
And Jordan and I, both semesters and I'll, Bjorn first semester at least, we did youth options at Carroll and UW-Waukesha, and that just kind of helped us get ahead on math, which is pretty integral in computer science, so that was very useful.
Reason, the reason I'm interested in coding, because my oldest daughter went to West, all my children went to West, and she is an art and math major at Gustavus. And when she went into teaching, it was kind of like a second career, she got excited about coding so much that now she's thinking about not teaching anymore, she just wants to do coding. But she teaches coding to middle school kids, and it's the most popular class in the school. And she started the whole program. And I think we use Project Lead the Way as our coding curriculum, and then she uses code.org, which is a, okay, thank you.
Other questions? I had, I had one that hopefully all of you could answer. What was the most challenging aspect of high school? And you're obviously smart, and you're obviously engaged in a lot of things, but I'm sure you've had some challenges along, along the ways. Do you want to share any of those with us too?
Yeah, sure. I can go ahead with that. So when I first came into high school, I was pretty shy and quiet, and because of that, I didn't want to join a lot of the clubs that I'm in. And one key factor that helped a lot with that personally is my mom, actually, who really encouraged me to step out and go out there and do that. Because especially when you're a freshman, I'd say the biggest challenge is, I mean, there are sophomores, juniors, seniors, you're at the very bottom, so it may feel a little bit nervous to go and join all these different clubs and organizations, especially when you don't really know what's going on. So I'd say out of all the challenges in high school, it would probably be overcoming that early on.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to answer that?
I would definitely say one of the key lessons that I've learned over the four years is time management. I mean, just from being in extracurricular activities and in taking a challenging course load, you kind of have to learn that or you're not going to succeed. So I would say that's one of the biggest lessons that I'm going to take with me to college, is the ability to manage my time and get things done.
Sure, sure. Andrew, anything?
I would say the people around you, because the, obviously, you don't want to make enemies with anyone in high school, but there's also some people that you don't necessarily want to become friends with because of how, how it associate you. So learning to balance that and learning to meet all 300 people in your class, and then people in other classes too, it's a challenge for sure.
Yes, yes. Well, congratulations to all of you. You have, you represent yourselves well, your schools well, and our districts well. We wish you luck moving forward with your higher education and your careers. Congratulations. Moving on to recognition, so we do not have any recognitions this evening, and, but we do have reports from our student representatives from Waukesha South High School tonight. Lauren and Ernesto, do you want to come forward and, or West High School? Did I say South? Oh, it's West and South. I'm sorry.
All right.
I'll let you guys introduce yourself and tell me what school you're from.
Hello. It's great to be back here. My name's Ernesto Caser Lopez. I know it's my second time back here, but great to be back. I go to Waukesha South. So we got the student report here, of course. But, so I'd like to start off with probably one of the biggest things that we had happened at South was that college and career signing day was last week. And basically, two-thirds of our entire senior class presented some form of documentation saying that they were either accepted into college or have plans to go on to either the military or into the workforce. So it's really great to see that not only I and the rest of my peers have like a plan for their, what their future, and they kind of know what they're doing. So I'm really proud of that. It's AP week, so over 1,000 AP tests will be given at South this week and the following week. So our classmates and I, or my classmates and I, have been studying hard, working at it, and hopefully everything goes well for everyone that's taking them. Something new that happened at South this year was that there was an event for the incoming freshmen for the, both the engineering and health academy students. So it's for the incoming freshmen so that they kind of know what they're getting into if they are interested in joining into the academies. So where they, so it basically planned out all four years. I didn't get the chance to go because of graduating. But I'd really, I, I'm, I'd like to tell them good luck if they ever see this, but that, it's going to be a lot of challenges, but they'll have a blast doing it, just like I did. The Black Shirt Players put on a wonderful production of West Side Story. If you had the chance to go see it, it was awesome. Some of my best friends were in it, and I thought it was hilarious. And it recently happened, and they have been nominated for several awards. Our music program competed in WSMA Solo State Solo and Ensemble Music Festival held at UW-Whitewater on Saturday, April 28th. South, South High School had 45 events performed representing band, orchestra, and choir. Of the 45 performances, 30 received at least a first rating, earning them a gold medal, and 14 received a second rating, earning a silver. Special congratulations to our nominees and recipients of the Exemplary Performance Award, the top honor in the festival. It is the best award reserved for the most outstanding performances of the day. Recipients can consider themselves among the most elite high school musicians in the state. Exemplary Performance Award nominees Noeli Booty, Bjorn Larsson, and Austin Wolf. Exemplary Performance Award recipients go to Catherine G., Gabby Olson, Sarah Wagner, and Kylie Zidell. Spring sports are off and running, and we're having already seen some great results, including some successes from the big meet wins from our track program, including one that happened last Friday at Burlington with the boys' track meet. That was a lot of fun. We scored a season high of 102 points, I'd like to say, so it was pretty great. Last Wednesday, I'd want to say, we were able to celebrate 262, that's the area code, student athletes at our annual scholar athlete banquet last week. These students have maintained at least a 3.5 GPA while participating at at least one sport season. There were 42 three-sport athletes and two four-sport athletes. At this year's prom, the theme was Great Gatsby, and it was a lot of, it was a huge success. It was a lot of fun. I was there. There was over 300 students there as well. It was overall just a great time to relax before a testing period started, so it was great. We had roughly 80 juniors this year join the National Honor Society at Forest South High School, which is great. They're doing great things early. Our Avid program has also been very busy this year. Our Avid program will also, will be expanding to include two sections of sophomores who will continue forward for the remainder of their high school career. 100% of our Avid seniors are attending college, which is great for them. They're awesome. Our Avid, Avid training among the staff as well has been start, has started. Roughly 70% of the staff, the staff at South will be trained in Avid instructional strategies and support. This is, this is great. Grayson Cooley has been named as the student speaker at the Avid Summer Institute in Minneapolis this coming August. He was selected after several rounds of interviews from roughly 1,000 potential student speakers. We're very proud of him. That's just great for him. Scholarship night will be happening soon, not exactly, I don't remember, I don't remember the date, but South has, is just shy of $1 million in scholarship and growing more every day. And then we'll be holding our graduation Saturday, June 9th, and we're excited to welcome many of you on the school board who will be there to help celebrate this day. Lastly, I just want to take the time to thank you guys for letting me be back here and give the opportunity to report just South in general and what we've all done. I'll be graduating in a few, few short weeks, but the student council will be electing another student rep. I don't know if they'll be great like I am. I've enjoyed being, being with you and sharing some of the great successes at South. Thank you.
Do we have questions for Ernesto?
Where are you going?
I will be attending UW-Milwaukee. I'm looking to major in mechanical engineering.
I remember those Burlington track meets. What do you run? Remind me of the events you're in.
I run mid-distance to distance, so 800, 1600, 3200, 4x8. Got on a 4x4, but it was a lot of fun. That was the invitation that they hold every year? The invitation, yeah, excellent.
It's, it's really cool to be part of a successful track team. Any team, really. But I relate to it better because I'm a runner also, so. Thank you, Ernesto. Are there any other questions of Ernesto? Thank you for representing South. I like the classy bow tie.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
School colors too. I'm, I'm sure your principal noticed that. And we wish you the best of luck moving forward.
Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight.
Lauren, you can talk about West. I'm sorry that I kind of mixed that together.
I will give you that. I almost did go to South, so.
Okay.
First of all, I would like to thank you for coming and letting me be here, and I'm sorry that you have to listen to me talk again. But I'm here to talk to you about Challenge Day that's coming to West in the coming fall. Before I talk about what Challenge Day is, let me backtrack a couple of weeks from when the staff at West brought in someone from a group called Youth Alive. We brought in Terrence Tally, and his theme that, that the speech he gave was called Never Give Up. And I can't speak for most of the class at West, but this speech personally changed me a whole lot. From the moment he said, "Never ever give up, you really matter in this world," that's when I woke up and realized I actually do matter, because I used to give up all the time. And thinking about constantly giving up every day on not only task, but myself and others, really put me in a place of, do I really belong here? And then once he came in, I felt I really belonged. So going forward to Challenge Day, what it is, instead of a day, it's going to look like a week. So for the first three days out of four, we're going to take 100 students and 25 teachers, community members, and volunteers, and it, they're going to have a day where they are united together, and they bring each other closer and the community closer. And on the fourth day, we're going to bring in the entire school to an assembly and just all give each other a taste of what it really is to have this Challenge Day. This would, leaving, leaving our legacy with this Challenge Day at West is really important to us, as this year was a really rough year for most of the seniors and most of the classes. So we're only looking forward from here.
Thank you, Lauren. Is there any other questions or any questions from our Board of Ed? Mr. Baumgart? I too would like to know what your plans are, Lauren.
I am going to Milwaukee as well, to their PEC School of Arts for Film and Animation.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That program's been around a long time and has an excellent reputation nationwide. And in Milwaukee, I mean, you'd think it'd be in Hollywood, right? You know, but yeah, well, we, we wish you luck and thank you for sharing with us, and enjoy your summer too.
Thank you.
We're now at the section of our meeting where we have an opportunity for our citizens to address the Board of Education. And as we have done in the past, we give up to three minutes of time for each person to speak. Kurt, at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, will give you a signal to try and wrap up in the next 30 seconds or so. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Ed meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and participants, please silence your phone at this time. Sue, do we have anybody signed up? Okay? Is there anyone that would like to step forward and address the Board at this time? And Paul, just state your name, and we think we have your address, so.
We don't. That's why I haven't been here lately. No, it's, my new address is 505 Lawless Drive. So that's why I haven't.
Thank you.
Anyways, I really regret missing last month. I really wanted to wish Barb a farewell. She really deserved it. Not Barb, sorry, Barb Pat, that missmanned. I really wanted to wish Ms. Madden a farewell. She really deserved it. You're in her seat, but you're filling it, and that's quite a seat to fill. And congratulations, Miss Boyd. Anyways, I did get a chance to watch last month's meeting, and I wanted to comment a few things that I, I heard in, in over the last few months. One is that, you know, more guns in schools are not the answer. I disagree. I feel the safest places on earth are a police station and NRA convention. There are plenty of guns in those places, and they are very safe places. We tend to draw targets on our schools by saying, "No guns allowed here." Where if I want to do something nefarious, where better place to go? It's just a sad fact, you know? When Cain killed Abel, Abel didn't understand what murder was, much less what was coming. God couldn't say, "You're going to be murdered by your brother," because he didn't know that kind of evil existed in his brother's heart. So the reason, so anyways, there is that. You know, I, I don't know if the Board of Education is appropriate place to be taking up such things about whether or not we're going to disavow the Second Amendment when half our kids in our schools can't tell us why we have a constitution, why it was written, why these people said things like, "You can't keep troops in our houses." Why would they do that? Why did they feel it was so important to guarantee the right to free speech? They never knew a time, these kids have not known a time when these things were taken away from them. You know, the liberal pope, John Paul Stevens, has said lately that the, the Second Amendment belongs in the 18th century where it came out of. Really, because the 20th century was so great. You know, when we had things like the Holocaust, Pol Pot, Pol Pot, oh, Russian, I can't think of his name. All the, the great leaders of the 20th century, the mass murderers that took place, you know, the 20th century was so friendly to humanity. Well, we now look at what's going on in the world today, because we should trust in our leaders and hand our guns over to our leaders. I'm not willing to do that. I'm just not one man who's willing to do that. I, let's see, I'm running out of time here, but I, I thank for the opportunity to, to share this speech. Oh, one thing is, one thing that I wanted to say is, it's funny how the, the one topic that never came up and was talked about is those poor reading scores that Mr. Gray talked about last month. Those are the things that belong in this meeting, and that needs to be addressed. It wasn't surprising to me. I am, I took my daughter out of the schools because of, I felt the lack of teaching our, my daughter how to read. Anyways, thanks for your time.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the Board at this time? Okay, thank you. Moving on to our minute approval. We do have several minutes for consideration here. On April 11th, a regular Board of Ed meeting, meeting minutes on April 11th. Also, on April 11th, we had an executive session. On April 23rd, we had a special meeting for reorganization of the Board of Education. On May 2nd, we had an expulsion session. There was a correction, just a small one, made to the time in the minutes for the reorganization minute, meeting. So at this time, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Reinacek. Is there a second?
Second.
Standing by Mr. Baumgart. Any further discussion or correction? All in, I'm sorry, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Moving on to our communications report given by Superintendent Gray.
What about communications? I'm sorry.
Communications.
None tonight, this evening.
None, okay. How about an update from the Waukesha Education Foundation?
I believe, do, do you have the notes on that, Barb?
No, I don't know.
Okay. Well, I can tell you, this Saturday, we have the Waukesha Education 5K Run. Very much looking forward to that. We have a lot of team competition going on. There are a number of, a number of our schools have teams, as well as we have a couple of central office teams that will be competing in that. How well we'll be competing, I'm not entirely sure, but we are looking forward to that. Again, that was, that's at North High School. You have some information at your desk at the, as of the times of those particular events, but the, I believe 8:30 is the start of the Wellness Fair, and then we have the children's run, the, the 5K run, and then the 3K walk. So hopefully, you can come out, even if you don't want to run, that's still a nice event to bring the family to, especially the wellness event. And then the next event after that is August 7th. That's the Waukesha Education Golf Outing, Annual Golf Outing. These have been going on for at least a couple dozen years. This one is at Western Lakes Golf Club. And again, we're going to be doing some of those things. years. This one is at Western Lakes Golf Club. And again, that's 11:30 start, but it, it is a very fun event. Last year was our first venue where we went to Western Lakes, and it was, it was really excellent. They did a nice job in, in handling the event, and I'm sure it'll be equally as well done this year. So, those are the two big events coming up. And after that, I know there's still some other events in the planning stage, but I don't have dates or final information on those, so.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gray. Appreciate that update. Uh, moving on to our Safety Committee report given by Ms. Roddy.
Yes, thank you. The Safety Committee met this morning at the Service Building. In old business, the, the committee reviewed the student and workers' incident reports. Last month's meeting took place on April 18th. After our board, our full board meeting, the board got those minutes, but for the public's reference. Three topics that were discussed were the proposal for Rose Glenn's Playground for a younger-aged group of children. Joe Cook provided the committee an update with the Crisis Response Review Meeting that had taken place on March 23rd. And then lastly, Steve Stolman presented a demo of a new clock slash page, paging Speaker System. The new business that was handled this week was the Bloodborne Pathogen Exposure Control Plan has been developed. The plan has been approved by the Safety Committee. A copy will be kept with HR. It will be reviewed by the district nurse and approved by the committee on an annual basis. Principals should be notified after the June Safety Meeting with more information as to how to share this plan with their staff. The next item of discussion was with regards to safety and upkeep of playground equipment, and just who does that and how often. And then lastly, Glenn had shared with us a list of projects that are slated for, to be completed over the summer. On that same note, GE will be coming to do their GE Service Day, doing work at Lowell, South, Butler, and Hillcrest this year. The Safety Committee will meet again on June 6th at 9:00 AM at the Service Building. And with that, Mr. President.
Thank you, Amanda. We do have at our desk the Bloodborne Pathogens Exposure Control Plan. It's 17 pages.
Yes.
And I, I remember when my mom first volunteered to be a nurse in the school district back in the 70s. And it was, she was just a volunteer, just a, a mom, helping out. And how complex things have gotten over the years, and how much training we need to give on health is, is just amazing, just amazing. So, thank you for bringing us up to speed on this, and we'll keep moving forward. Appreciate it. Uh, moving on to our Charter, School, and Program Report given by Mr. Bungart.
Yes, I have some good news, I guess I'd call it. We, you know, May is great. It's a celebration month, so we get to talk about all these good things. First one deals with Avid at South, and you heard part of it from Ernesto. He actually stole some of my stuff tonight already. But anyway, I got word of this and, about Jason, Grayson, and Dan Schreier sent me a letter, the email that he sent out to the staff at South, which gives you a little bit more just definition about, about Grayson. Avid shout-out to Grayson Cooley, who has been selected as a speaker for the Avid Summer Institute, or about 1,000 people, Avid students who enter the Summer Institute Speaker Contest, and Grayson will be one of two, sharing his story in Minneapolis on August 1st. Grayson's speech is based on what he overheard a fellow student say. That is, quote, "Avid is for stupid people who need help in school." We know that is far from the truth. His voice, his personality shine throughout. Grayson is a very proud, is very proud of the Avid program and being a black shirt. Please congratulate him if you see him and wish him luck. Thank you to everyone who has helped Grayson grow into the young man he is today. He has had a ton of great support from a variety of awesome personalities and role models in our building, and is so happy to have that support. From Avid, you reflect the very best of what Avid is. We are so honored that you will, that you will share your story. Know that it will be, it will help change the lives of Avid educators and students for years to come. If you don't remember Jay, uh, Grayson, he's been at some of our meetings with Ernesto as, as one of the student speakers. And next subject I want to get to is the Scholar-Athlete Event, and he's also one of our top-end scholar athletes. I mean, the guy just shines all over, and he is so professional. Right, Amanda? Amanda joined me when we went to the Scholar-Athlete Event at Waukesha South High School. And some of these numbers are repetitive from what Ernesto gave you before, but I will lose my place if I don't follow them. The total athletes for the 2017-18 school year will be approximately 530. Summer baseball has yet to start, so Todd over, Sobrinsky was giving me some averages on that. We recognize 241 student, student-scholar athletes. That's 46% of our athletes who made, who had achieved a 3.5 GPA or above as calculated at the end of the first semester grade reporting period for Jan, in January. 241 scholar-athletes represented 65 freshmen, 64 sophomores, 71 juniors, and 41 seniors. We recognize 43 student-athletes who took up the challenge of being in three or four sport-athletes during the, during the past school year. Forty-one were in three sports, and two were actually in four different sports. Also recognized on Wednesday night were 29 students for the 17-18 school year with, with specific honor, honors or scholarships that they've received. 430 people were at the dinner, 300 awards or plus that were handed out, and we had a great time. Right?
Yes.
Right. Leaving South, moving over to E-Achieve, I got some, again, some very positive information from, from Rick over there. He, he announces that we've received the scores for our full-time E-Achieve juniors who took the ACT tests in February or March. Very pleased to report that as a school, we increased our average composite score by one point for a score of 20.5. This is higher than what the state average has been, and we've been above that for the last three previous years. Another item, the 2018 Regular Open Enrollment Application Period ended last Monday, the 30th of April. At 4:00 PM, E-Achieve Academy and elementary schools received 619 applications this year, a 23% increase over last year, and the most that they've received during any regular enrollment, open enrollment period in the past three years. And he advises, we always know that of that, they may not all show up for class next September, but that's part of the thing. They just, that's, that's the application phase. We have 100 more full-time students right now than we did at this same time last year, and leads are coming into our website also, that are coming into our website, will, are pouring in at a record pace. Also regarding E-Achieve, on April 18th, E-Achieve Associate Principal Jason Smith received the 2018 Carroll University Early Career Leader Award for the positive impact he has had on E-Achieve, the community advocacy of students, and his positive leadership. And at the last minute, he sent me an addition. Aye, that's Rick, just found out that one of our eighth-grade students that we share with STEM, Harsha Gadi Padi, took 11th place in the nation for his grade level at the Math Con Competition Finals held in Chicago this past Saturday, and is being given a bronze medal for his accomplishments. There were a total of 52,000 participants in all grade levels across the nation. Harsha is a full-time student in STEM, but he's been taking his math, eighth grader. But he's been taking his math classes at E-Achieve for the last four years, where he's currently enrolled in AP Calculus.
Wow. That's an understatement.
That's what I said. We have so many things that we hear about in May that just make us, Barb said it earlier, proud to be part of this district. And, you know, I'm sure there's other stuff out there that they just didn't get to me in time. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bungart. Moving on, we do have an item for action tonight. Every once in a while, we are asked to rename a building or to name a building. And the last time we went through this was for Les Paul Middle School. There has been a request to change the name of our planetarium to, it currently is the Charles Horwitz Planetarium. And as you know, we have a policy that has a very clear procedure that we have to follow when we have a request like this. So I'm gonna turn it over to Todd to talk through this request.
Okay. We, we did have this request from individuals from the Friends of the Horwitz Planetarium to include Dave DeRimer's name on that in some manner. Dave has been there 40 years. And not only 40 years, he's, he's, he's run a good show. He's, he's worked hard to maintain and even improve it recently. So, I, I followed the policy and assembled a committee of staff and community members, community leaders, who discussed the, the request, and then did vote, or, or by consensus, to pass this along to the board. So with that, Bill was our board representative on that committee, so I, I have asked Bill if he could take care of the resolution.
Gladly. Yes, this started last February or March, I don't know when it was, but Larry Neins contacted Todd and myself, and we got the ball rolling on this. So I'm gonna read this as, as a resolution. Whereas the citizens of the district and friends of Horwitz Planetarium desire and have requested to honor David DeRimer by including his name as part of the official name of the district's planetarium located at the Retzer Nature Center, and whereas David DeRimer has dedicated 40 years of management, commitment, and excellent leadership to the district planetarium, and whereas a committee of community leaders and district staff convened on May 3rd, 2018, per our policy 7250, and unanimously recommended including David DeRimer's name as part of the official name of the planet, planetar, district planetarium, I therefore move that the Board of Education approve the official name of the district planetarium to be the Horwitz-DeRimer Planetarium.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brzink. Discussion? Mrs. Brzink.
I came to the district a long time ago, and there was no planetarium program. And Dave was very enthusiastic about that area of study. And there was, like I said, no planetarium. There was no room. And he brought that program up from nothing to now having, you know, state notoriety, national notoriety, and he's an outstanding leader, and he deserves any reward that we can place upon him. Thank you for that.
Mr. Bungart.
I would, I would first of all concur with everything Barbara said, and we had that kind of response from the, the seven members, seven, I think, seven or eight, we had there that morning to discuss this. We even had a little history on how it came to be that the Horwitz name was on there and involved, he was with the district back then, and a significant amount of the original financing came through him. And there, I think somebody who did contact the family. Was there any?
I, I have not heard. We, we're not able to find.
Anybody.
Charles has passed away, and we were not able to find his, his, his wife. As Bonnie Slice had kept in contact with the family, but she's not heard from them for about four years, so.
I guess.
We were not able to find them.
The point there was, we wanted to maintain that name as well, because of this, that's where it started.
Right.
But David has grown it from the basement of this building twice, technologically advancing, advancing it out at Retzer's despite initially. And I was probably the only board member here at the time we moved to change it to Retzer's. And there was some issues there, but the issues have been taken care of.
There were a few of us.
Oh, you were too, okay. Didn't know you guys were as old as me.
Can't you tell by the gray?
Anyway, again, the, the panel that met was very appreciative of what, what we're planning here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, it's not that I'm against renaming, or naming, or adding a name to it. What I am concerned about is, you know, when we did Les Paul, it wasn't an easy thing. And there became a lot of public comment, and I think it only passed 5-4, because the public had a lot of time to comment on it. I wouldn't think this would be a problem this time. But I do think that it's, it's kind of under the radar screen for us to take action so quickly on something that I think is actually a fairly important honor. And by that, I think, I really think it should be almost like our policy, where we announce to the public our intentions of changing the name, and we give it 30 days to be reviewed by the public, just in case someone shows up and has objections that haven't been heard yet. I'm not saying that we change our position. I'm not saying it would make any difference to whether we voted on it tonight or 30 days from now. I just think it's such a significant event that it adds more value to the event if we take more time to allow the public to comment on it than to just have a quick committee. Not, I'm not saying quick, but the public doesn't know enough about it, and hasn't had enough time to comment on, on this issue. I think anytime we name a building or a school and it involves a prior name, like Mr. Horwitz, who, as I recall, I was trying to find out more about Mr. Horwitz on, on the internet, but as I recall, he is a very significant figure in the district in terms of launching this program, and that's why it's named after him. So, I'm not against the proposal. I'm against, I'm, I'm concerned about the fact that we haven't taken and allowed the community as a whole to, to weigh in on it, rather than just taking action tonight. So that's, that's my concern. I think it'd be more valuable, and I think it'd be more honoring of Mr. Horwitz and Mr. DeRimer if we allowed this just to give public comment for 30 days before we move forward with this. That would be my preference. Not that I'm against it, it's just, I think it would be more appropriate when you go to name a program or building.
Mr. Bungart.
I'll respond by saying that, that's, that's an okay idea as we move forward, that we might want to consider that, and I agree. But part of the reason we had the community pretty well covered in there, including a, an alderman and a member of the, a very active member of the community in a variety of other methods. We had somebody from the Business Alliance, and then one or two others in there. Okay, they're on that list that you received in your packet. Sorry, I forgot about that. I, I think you're making a good point, but at this point, I'm not gonna table this if that's what you're looking for, so.
Mr. O'Brien.
I wouldn't expect you to table it. You made the motion. That's just.
Well, you could.
Yeah, well, anyway. It's just, like I said.
I hear you.
I made my point. Well, I would recommend that we add that in the policy, because it doesn't, the policy doesn't require it. And I don't think that's an issue at all, but to me, it's probably something that we should add in the policy. So, when this happens in the future, there's no question that it, it's gotta go with a 30-day notice. I, it's probably a good idea.
Here's, Mr. O'Brien.
And again, I'm not against renaming it, but the, the other thing that should be taken in consideration is that it may be known as Charles Horwitz Planetarium. With the internet and the tag searches and all that, when you start changing the name around, I don't know how much you lose in terms of being able to pick up that recognition. It shouldn't really matter that much, but that's something that we should also consider when we talk about the renaming thing, is how do we make sure it's branded with the new name as well, and what would be the way of going about that.
See, Joe Cook has already written this down.
There have, since I've been on the board, there have been four actions this, this group has taken. One was the Bob Duckett Room. Ken Halib, or the Stadium, that was led by, up itself, to be named after Ken Halib, was a long-term athletic director and very successful football coach. And then, we had Les Paul, and now this would be the fourth one. And then, and with regards to the Mr. Duckett Room and the Mr. Halib Stadium, both of those went through as this process, just to my recollection. I don't think we had a 30-day kind of, you know, time period where, where people were able to make comment on. So, I think it got stretched out for Les Paul, because it came up in committee, and then we had a bunch of people coming to committee, and that kind of added to it. So, just a little bit of history. Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, I, the, the challenge here is, unlike all those other three things, we're not taking, it's almost like taking a, a piece of art and adding another piece of art to it. You know, the artist that did the first piece of art doesn't really like it that you added another piece of art to the display, you know, just the way it goes. It's like. It's like, you know, go out to the Milwaukee Art Museum, when they did that, the artist was about moving the big red thing. It, when you're talking about taking an existing name and adding another name to it, it's a little bit different than when you just name a field and when you name a room. Even central to Les Paul shouldn't have been all that controversial, to be honest with you. But, so I'm not against doing this. It's just that those types of things are the issues where you might have more of a, if the public knew at large, they might have more of a concern about the fact that we're taking Mr. Horowitz's name and adding another name to it, you know, no matter how well-deserving that name is, that's all.
Further discussion or motions or amendments?
A question. Who made the recommendation to add Mr. DeRimer's name? Was that the Friends of?
This came from, yeah, the Friends.
So it came from the Friends of the Horowitz?
Yeah. But specifically by Larry Neins representing that committee.
And his contact. He came personally down here to meet with us.
Okay, so the Friends of the Planetarium are the ones who asked for this. So by asking, they have given their consent.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien.
Have we heard from Mr. DeRimer on this issue?
Yes, I have. I've talked to him.
He was okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's very honored.
Okay, any other discussion? I do think that this is a wonderful way to honor Dave's extended service to our committee. I know that my kids were excited every time to go to the planetarium. I'm sure all of you who've had students come through and are still in the district, that's one of those things that the kids get pumped up to do. So it's one of those gems. Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Thank you, Todd and Bill. Moving on to our consent agenda. Darren, do we have any gifts to report on this?
Yeah, three gifts tonight. Hadfield Elementary School received $1,000 from Susan Wagner. This gift was given with the intention to be used in Mr. Shockley's second-grade classroom. The Charles Horowitz Planetarium, formerly known as the Charles Horowitz Planetarium, I suppose, received $500 from the Lake Country's Women's Club to help purchase new equipment and programs. Waukesha Maide Program received $3,500 from Metal Era to be used to support costs for the technical education courses.
Yes. Thank you for that, Darren. Mrs. Brzink.
I have a question, please, Darren. When an individual educator receives a monetary gift from parent or someone else in the community, does that, does that individual handle the funds by herself or himself, or does that go into the building fund and then is used as the money is spent to buy things for the classrooms?
Yeah, we have a special account structure just for this case where the dollars actually come central. And then they cut purchase orders out of it or submit for reimbursement, just like they do the regular budget, so we can track it.
Good, good. Because otherwise, that's a lot of responsibility for the individual. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren, and thank you to those who have given to our district this last month and in the past. We appreciate that very, very much, very kind. Tonight, your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, there will be an opportunity in just a bit. We did have an expulsion panel action. So included in your items for the approval are decisions of the expulsion panel which met May 2, 2018. A confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsion was in your packet along with the minutes included under item 1G. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we've scheduled an executive session at the close of the regular meeting. Approval of the consent agenda confirms full board agreement of the expulsion panel's action. Is there anyone that would like to set an item aside at this time? Okay, seeing none. Karen, will you please present the consent agenda?
Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of 10 resignations, five leaves of absence, 10 new full and part-time contracts, and 885 continuing full-time teacher contracts, as well as eight part-time and partial leave contracts. The information was provided in your packet and an addendum was placed on your desks. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Given by Ms. Roddy. Any discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the vote.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero one.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Karen. Moving on to the superintendent's report given by Mr. Gray, Dr. Gray.
Some bad news. We did not, once again, we did not qualify for a FabLab grant from the Department of Workforce Development. Typically, that grant provides $25,000 from workforce development, and the district matches 25. At this point, I am working on a plan to do our own. We'll work off that particular grant proposal, and we will be talking to various businesses and other organizations that do provide funding for these so that we can, we can do our own. The area district that received it was Elm Brook, but I'm not going to wait for DWD to keep putting us off. So we're going to go forth with our own particular grant at this point. Dashboard, that was one of the board goals, to develop a dashboard to review student achievement and other data, is ready to go. If you are interested, we will be scheduling some how-to sessions in the very near future. You can access that off of any kind of PC, laptop, whatever. But there will be some instruction on what to look for and how to get into the various components of that, which leads to another point. I think last week I talked about reading scores. That was actually a national study. It was not a state or a district study. Our state, as a nation, the reading scores were flat, doesn't mean they were bad or poor, they were just flat. Our state typically scores at or above the national scores. And then our district in the past has scored at or above the state's scores. However, the last couple of years, we don't get reading scores. We have ELA scores, which are English Language Arts scores, which includes reading, writing, grammar, and so on. And so there's nothing to suggest for, again, I watched the meeting last week, and I did not say we had poor reading scores because in the last three years, we don't necessarily get reading scores. We get ELA scores. And, you know, like all districts, we have some work and we've set some pretty, pretty high goals in that over the next couple of years. But the case is that we don't, you know, we don't have poor reading scores and compared to the state average, we're right there or better. And finally, at this point, I'd like to say congratulations to all our graduates from all our four high schools. We won't be having another board meeting prior to our graduations on June 9. Once again, those graduation times will be staggered as they were last year, and that is fantastic for South High School. If you've ever done a graduation at 2:00 PM at South High School when it's 90 degrees and humid out, that is cruel and unusual punishment. So at 10:00 AM, it's a little bit better. It's not quite so bad. So we were able to, again, stagger those. And I think until South gets some kind of cooling system in the fieldhouse, we'll keep South as first and then maybe switch North and West around. Both of those fieldhouses do have some kind of air conditioning.
That was part of my wellness program.
Well, you, let me tell you. I made the mistake one year of actually wearing a suit under the robe. That was a huge mistake. But so if you, if you haven't and you're interested in participating in the graduations, please let Sue know and she'll sign you up. And that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. Moving on to our committee reports. That's where all the heavy-duty lifting is done. We're going to start, we rotate through our committees each month. We're going to begin with our Technology Committee presented by Mr. Dietz.
Mr. President, the committee has not met within the last month, so I don't have anything to report on at this time. But however, we are meeting May 30, and I look forward to giving the report next board meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Moving on to Finance and Facilities, given by Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Como. We have two action items that we, we had two action items, we worked on one of them. First action item that went forward was the approval of the North High School storage proposal. The committee was presented a proposal to install three storage containers near the stadium at North High School. Units would be placed behind the home and visitors' bleachers and replace the existing sheds and provide a more permanent storage solution. The anticipated cost for all three units is $24,000. The committee approved the storage proposal as presented, and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion? Mr. O'Brien.
Anyone who didn't watch the meeting the other night, they're more like shipping containers. They're 20-foot-long containers and 40-foot-long containers, very weather resistant. They look much better than the sheds, which are starting to fall down. And they, and there's no real recovery cost on the sheds, they're in such bad shape. They will be located behind the bleachers. The only concern was, you know, making sure that students weren't jumping from the bleachers onto the sheds and how would we monitor that. That was the only concern expressed.
Also, they will be a very neutral color, not necessarily purple. They'll be something that better blends in with the, with the area, so.
That's paint. Yeah.
Further discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on the North High School storage proposal.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Kirk?
The other action item, which we didn't take any action on, we just gave directions on what we'd like to see. The City of Waukesha easement request at Lowell Elementary. The committee was presented a proposed easement from the City of Waukesha. The easement involves the installation of a new gravity flow sanitary sewer line along the west side of the Lowell campus. The committee asked for additional information before being able to take any action. This item will be placed on the next month's agenda for action with the intent to have some of the issues that we wanted to have presented covered. Those issues would involve, anytime we do an easement, we want to make sure we preserve as much of the district's rights on that easement as possible. It's kind of something Mr. Warren used to do all the time and something that we've asked them to take into account this time. The next was the information items. There's two items. There's a monthly budget report. The committee was presented a budget report for the month of April. $4,873,638 reported in the general fund revenue, and $9,74,146 was expended during the month. $42,043 was reported in the Special Education Fund, and $2,128,120 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projection in other areas. Facility plan. Administration reminded the committee of the board workshop scheduled for Tuesday, May 22 at 6:00 PM. Results of the community facility survey will be viewed at that time. The survey is set to close on May 9, 2018, which would be?
Today? Midnight. You've got a few more hours.
I think actually 5:00 PM.
Oh, it's done.
Well, it suggested adjourn the meeting instead of this. Don't you think? Yeah. Another discussion item is the preliminary 2018 budget update. The committee was updated on the status of 2018-19 budget development. The district is anticipating the loss of $1.8 million revenue limit authority due to declining resident enrollment and a 4% loss to state equalization rate. These factors result in a projected tax rate of $8.12, which would be a 9 cent decrease from the current tax rate of $8.21. The committee will be presented a preliminary budget to consider at our June meeting. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Appreciate that. Moving on to Teaching and Learning, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Teaching and Learning Committee of the Waukesha Board of Education met on May 1, 2018. There was one information item and one discussion item on the agenda. The information item was Summit View Magnet School update. The Board of Education formally recognized Summit View as a magnet school four years ago. Summit View has been recognized as a school of excellence and a two-time school of distinction since last presenting to the board. Principal Jeff Peterson presented information regarding the growth of magnet schools in America on a national level and provided additional information from a recently published study of magnet schools in the U.S. In addition, he shared recent awards earned by Summit View. The discussion item was a student achievement update from North High School. Principal Becky Newcomer updated the board members on North High School's dedication to the school-wide mission of Avid and the progress North is making towards school-wide implementation with the purpose of increasing student achievement. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 5 at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Human Resources and Compensation Committee, given by Ms. Reinacek.
Thank you. Last month, the board approved of preliminary notices of layoff. This evening, we are recommending the final approval of layoff. It is important to note the notice of layoff is not due to performance. This action is necessary due to enrollment reductions and restructuring. The list of staff members that need to be approved for final notice of layoffs was placed at your desk. Mr. President, I move to approve the layoff as presented.
Is there a second to that motion? Standing by Mr. Dietz. Discussion? Total of four, roughly four individuals, but not full FTEs. Did you see, did you see the extra, it wasn't in our packet, did everyone get it?
Down the desk. It was just this.
All right. Seeing no discussion, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Barbara Brzink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Karen?
The administration is recommending Jenna Hare for the position of Assistant Principal of Les Paul Middle School. Ms. Hare is currently the Assistant Principal at Milwaukee Spanish Immersion School. Ms. Hare states that the impetus behind her work is to improve the community in which she lives. For her, that means improving student achievement by improving teacher practices. She is a learner and leader. While overseas, she learned to speak Spanish and learned how to understand language learners and the need for culturally responsive teaching practices to reach and engage all students. Her work has been concentrated around literacy and leadership. She is highly informed of the content and processes found in the teaching standards. Ms. Hare earned her master's degree in elementary education at the University of Alabama and her bachelor of science at UW Stevens Point. She received her principal and director of instruction certification from Educate Wisconsin. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. I move to approve the recommendation of Jenna Hare to the position of Assistant Principal of Les Paul Middle School.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Standing by Ms. Roddy. Discussion? Just wanted to, very impressive resume that Ms. Hare has, and I think she'll be, if we pass this, I think she'll be a welcome addition to our district. One of the things that stood out for me is her international teaching experience. She taught in Colombia, Paraguay, and Honduras. And as we continue to have an increase in Hispanic-speaking population, I think this is a huge plus. And as we know, it's hard to hire bilingual teachers, let alone bilingual administrators. So that's a, she has a lot of talents. Any other discussion, comments? Sue, please take the roll call vote.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Barbara Buzink.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Karen?
The 2018-19 contract between the EAW and the school district of Waukesha was negotiated on April 12th, 2018, where a tentative agreement was reached. The EAW recommended the tentative agreement to the bargaining unit, which voted in favor of the proposal. The base wage increase of 2.13 for teaching employees in 2018-19 will result in an effective increase of 1.437 percent per sale on the salary scale. I move to approve the 2018-19 base wage increase for teaching employees as presented.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Mr. Dietz, discussion? Mr. Ryan?
The base wage increase is a relatively small increase that, and it's based on a calculation relative to the lowest sales in the bachelor's column and the master's column, depending upon how many teachers or masters required and bachelors required. So this base wage increase is, is not the biggest component of what we would consider will be the supplemental wages going forward, but it's important to understand how these numbers are calculated because it is, in essence, this is kind of what we're allowed to discuss with the bargaining unit. We're not allowed to discuss the supplemental. And so the base wage is more or less pretty much set every year because there's only so much you can give, and most of it's going to come out of the supplemental, so.
And that's based on the Consumer Price Index at a given time each year. What's that date? Doesn't it usually come out in January, Chris? The CPI, is it for calendar year is what it's based on?
Yeah, it usually comes out the end of January or beginning of February, and that's determined by the Wisconsin Employment Relations Commission in Madison.
Right, okay. Mr. O'Brien?
Let's be clear, the Consumer Price Index does not, it, it doesn't, when they use that, it's not keeping their wages up with the computer Consumer Price Index. They're about half of what they should be to stay up with the computer Consumer Price Index because it's based on the lowest sell. So it's the number you multiply it by that gives you that amount of money, so the amount that we have to give them overall is based on the total Consumer Price Index, so.
Other comments or discussion? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote on approving the 2018-2019 base wage increase?
Barbara Buzink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinichek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
And Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero one, Sue. Karen?
A salary schedule is not subject to negotiation. In fact, it would be a violation of Act 10 to negotiate the schedule with the Education Association of Waukesha. With the salary schedule that was implemented for the 2014-15 school year, the Board approved step and lane advancement each year since then. Using the approved salary advancement process, approved in August 2015, it is recommended that steps and lanes be approved for 2018-19 year in accordance with the strategic compensation plan. I move to approve supplemental wage increases for 2018-2019 for employees of the teacher bargaining group.
Is there a second to that motion? Standing by Mr. O'Brien, discussion? Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, you know, I think we kind of ran out of time on this one. The reality is, I think we're going to have to do something and adjust the schedule a little bit. I mean, I think for the Board and for the committee, you have a lot of new board members, so they probably don't even understand why we have a schedule, and, and I think that's part of taking more time so we can educate as to why we have the schedule, how the schedule works, and as to what value it is. Because when you go to change it, which it does need some changing, you want to know why you're doing what you're doing and how it will be affected by the changes. And I think the Board needs to maintain control over this in cooperation with the administration, of course. You shouldn't really leave it in the hands of staff, of the teaching staff, to, to work out these changes because we may be at opposite goals, right? But I will say that the first column is no longer competitive, and the top end of the 4M column is also no longer competitive. So we will need to take a look at that for the next year and be cognizant of that. And again, it's not a bargaining issue. We should be able to work on this regardless of what happens with bargaining the base. It's just something that we need to, need to get to work on and pay attention to.
Other comments or discussion? Actually, supplemental wages can be adjusted at any time, can be distributed multiple times throughout the year. There's really no limit to what we can or can't do as a Board of Education with respect to supplemental pay. We have worked many, many hours, as Chris can attest to, to get to this stage of the game, to try and balance many things out between the Board of Education, what's important to us, what's important to our administration, and what's important and fair to our employees. So there's a lot of hard work over the years that have, have gone into this, and I know I am going to support this. Mrs. Buzink?
Kurt, how do we compare with other school districts in Waukesha County?
I could, well, I could refer to Chris, but I do have a, I mean, I do have a feeling for, you know, based on, you know, other schools and other districts I'm familiar with, you know, they just don't have a, a start. Now, we can put people, when we hire them, any place we want to, that we give our, we give our administrators the flexibility to do that, but if they're, pull up our schedule or if they should ask for our schedule, which I don't think, and we want to use it as a selling point, if they look at that first lane, they'll say, well, that's pretty low compared to everybody else around you as a starting point. Our second lane is actually low, but at least it's somewhat competitive, and also it doesn't cap out in just four years. There are, there's an ease of movement across lanes, across the bachelor's lane that maybe isn't quite as easy across the, the master's lanes. What we use in our schedule is, it's an incentive-based schedule because of the lane movement. We're kind of unique in that way, and we're also unique in the amount of movement that we allow by increased years of service. So there's lots of uniquely nice things about our schedule that I think we want to preserve, but it's true that if you look at the top end of our salary schedule and if you look at all the impact of Act 10, which is paying, contributing to their pension, and the fact they get far less than the cost of living increase every single year, we have now fallen behind at the top end of the 4M column, and we're certainly off the rails on the 1B column. So it's just something we need to take, we need to take a look at, and, and we need to do it sooner rather than later because I'd rather have this schedule fixed, improved. You'll never completely fix it, but improved as we start the next year instead of waiting until the middle of next year.
I agree, thank you.
Now, Bill, did you, oh, okay. Now, in the past, many moons ago, prior to Act 10, basically you'd move across the schedule in a couple different ways, just, you know, putting in time and then getting your master's degree, but we've added some things to that over the, over the years. Chris, do you want to comment on what are some of those things that our teachers are asked to do to move? Talking about certain level of evaluations and some of the classes we want them to take?
A traditional salary schedule would pretty much value two things, and that is the years of experience and amount of education a teacher obtained throughout the years. This salary schedule tends to value a different two things, and that is, it values, it values performance and it values teacher leadership. So depending on what column a teacher is on the salary schedule, they would need to earn twos, threes, or fours. It's a one through four scale. One is unsatisfactory. So basically, at the lowest paid columns in each of the master's and the bachelor's area, we would just want them to not be unsatisfactory. Once we get to the third column in the bachelor's lane or the third and fourth column in the master's lane, we want them to be proficient, especially in that master's lane, the idea is that the higher paid teachers would be earning, I mean, the higher performing teachers would be earning the most amount of money. In order to move across lanes, we do have an opportunity for teachers, newer teachers, to advance a lane from the 1B to the 2B column or the 1M to the 2M column by completing the required nine credits that all new teachers must take. But the real value for the school district are teachers that are showing distinguished performance in the areas of their own professional development and then applying it to what they do every day in the classroom, collaborating with other teachers, and also leading, leading in, in a variety of ways, either in their own classroom, in their school, in the district, and/or organizations that are related to what they're teaching.
And that those leadership roles a lot of time involve a lot of extra time and effort and, you know, contribute to moving our district forward as, as a whole.
That's the idea. I mean, the main goal of a strategic compensation salary schedule would, if it's working well, it would result in higher student achievement because you would have your highest performing teachers in place and earning the highest amount of money, therefore, students would be performing better.
Mrs. Buzink?
Chris, are you saying then that now the salary scale is based on two things, experience and evaluations?
It's, it's based on their performance, so the evaluation, and also teacher leadership, which is also a component of the evaluation.
Such as? What kind of leadership are you thinking of?
So the leadership, as I explained, will have to do with their own professional development and collaborating with their colleagues, participating or organizing, not just participating, but organizing a variety of activities or professional development for other teachers or even in their own classroom.
So does the principal still make the determination?
The evaluator works with the teachers through that whole evaluation process, and it's actually a three-year process because the teachers are on a summary year every third year, and the leadership, what we hope to see is improved and stronger leadership throughout those three years culminating to a distinguished performance in the third, at the end of the third year.
Chris, has this, has this become a common practice among school districts?
I would say that a number of school districts did start using the evaluation scores as part of their salary schedules or their salary compensation plans. Over the past few years, I'm hearing more and more school districts removing the evaluation scores from the plans and having teachers advance in salary using different methods. So currently, our, the strategic compensation design team, which has been in place since 2012, it's pretty well intact, very few changes with it. We've been meeting, I think we met three or four times this year already to talk about, you know, how we can improve the salary schedule, how we can improve that top cell that Kurt O'Brien is talking about, because in fact, we are losing ground among our competing school districts in terms of that top cell. $83,000 while a very nice wage is about at the 50th percentile in our area.
What I think is interesting, Chris, is that in the past, teachers just automatically would move up every year despite evaluations, et cetera, and so this is interesting. You really earn, now you really are earning that extra step.
And you're right, and, you know, I don't want you to, we can't lose sight of the fact that it's very stressful for many teachers as well to know that, you know, their increase in salary is going to be depending on their performance, but, you know, I, I think that it's the right way to go because we, we all know that, you know, you, if you're just simply master's degree plus 30 credits and 17 years and you're earning the top amount, whether you're a great teacher or not a great teacher, you know, that's, you know, and if you have a teacher that doesn't have all that experience and is a really super great teacher, they're being held back simply because they didn't earn their extra credits or have enough years of experience. So we're trying to, we're trying to please a lot of people, and quite frankly, we're not doing that. We're not pleasing everybody.
Sure.
And so we, we did a survey of our staff. It was more of an informal survey. We had Todd Gray's superintendent's advisory committee, the teacher representatives ask their, the staffs in their schools for feedback on the salary schedule, and so we received a lot of really good information, some very positive, some not positive at all, and so that's what we're working from in the design committee.
Well, thank you for that because I'm not so sure that that's, you know, understood as you explained it tonight, so thank you for the explanation.
Welcome.
Other discussion, questions, comments on supplemental wages? Mrs. Reinichek?
I would just, would ask if Mr. O'Brien could repeat what he said about Act 10 and the, and the steps here. What did you say about that because of Act 10?
Well, for-
Going behind?
No, that's not exactly, because of Act 10, when you look at the impact of Act 10 from when it started and some of the things that developed at the start of that, which was the staff generally, both sides paid the retirement fund, we paid the retirement fund totally, and when Act 10, they, they made the teachers pay their half, which most people would say that makes sense, right? And I think I would say that makes sense, but it was an 8% wage cut right there, you know, essentially, in terms of, at just a flat straight wage cut break. Then at the, when you go to calculate the whole numbers and lay it out, the lowest percent increase in wage will be those who are making the highest wage because of the way the base wage calculation goes in the account. So when we're trying to adjust dollars, the people at the top end of the schedule come out the worst relative to how Act 10 came about and how it was developed. Doesn't mean Act 10 was bad, but it means that for those people, we have to take a look at that corner because we're losing ground to the districts around us. If the district around us are going up, and they also have Act 10, so we really can't blame Act 10 because our, we're not keeping pace, it just means that we're not adjusting appropriately within the Act 10 parameters. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, I think one of the things that Act 10 did is increase competition amongst districts, and that, that basically means that we have to be as competitive as we possibly can be to keep the good teachers here, so we do need to visit this from time to time. I'm glad the, the committee continues to meet, and we'll be bringing forward at least sometime during this next year, some recommendations, I would assume, which will come up to our Board of Ed, Human Resources and Compensation Committee. Yes, Mr. Ryan?
It's not only about keeping the teachers here, it's about giving the teachers that are here who have performed admirably, outstandingly, and at a high level, a competitive wage with the districts around us. I mean, we shouldn't be taking advantage of our very best teachers by not paying them what they earn relative to the market around us. So it's, it's, we do make it because of the schedule. We have a great schedule from a performance enhancement point of view where we really try to make it very attractive for them to want to get to the 3M and 4M line, and that's really one of our goals is, is to make it very attractive for them to go there, but they have to work to get there. It's not easy to get to those two columns.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Just a, just a quick point on that. I agree we should be definitely compensating our best and brightest teachers, however, our best and brightest teachers are not strictly at the top of 4M.
That's right.
So I think to concentrate just on that leaves out a lot of our best and brightest that are further down the salary schedule.
That's right.
And actually, some of the, some of the teachers who are newer and less experienced, who are go-getters and who are good, I would say that we have things set up pretty well for them, and I've heard actually from some of them that they enjoy some of the challenges
the system is designed to ben- to incentivize them. So, our best and brightest are the ones that will move the fastest across the schedule.
Well, that's what we want.
Yeah. And that's, that's what we want. And that's how the schedule is designed. It just so happens that that top cell is just no longer competitive for, and that covers a large number of our staff, so. And the first lane is also no longer competitive. And that's how we attract the best and brightest into our district.
Right. I just don't want to thought that the best and brightest are sitting on top of that 4M and are being poorly compensated. I think that probably our best and brightest are, more of them are lower on the schedule than, just in that one cell.
Mrs. Brusink?
Um, if a teacher comes to the district with like fifteen years' experience somewhere else, how far do, uh, do we give them as far as experience is concerned on the salary scale?
Well, now, Mrs. Brusink, you're trying to get into my world of negotiation.
[laughing]
And I don't want to give away all my secrets.
Aw.
But, um, we, as you, as you know, we do hire people throughout the schedule from our, on the consent agenda with the, we list the salaries that we're hiring at. And, um, oftentimes what I'll do is I'll look at their resume, I'll look at when they earn their master's degree, I'll look at their, their, um, their, um, licensing, and I'll ask myself, if they were here when they first got out of college, where would they be about now? Because I do try to keep thing, keep them within where our other similarly situated teachers are. Um, so, that's pretty much how I do it.
So, you say it varies?
It does vary.
Okay. That's interesting.
Mr. O'Brien?
Just to give you an example, I mean, you can, I, I know of a teacher that's, that's looking to transfer. They're expecting a fifty-seven thousand dollar salary and they only have a bachelor's. There's not that cell on our program. Now, whether they're worth that or not, but if they only had a bachelor's today, we wouldn't have a salary for them. They'd have to go to someplace else if they were going to be on a bachelor's schedule. So, these are the types of things we have to consider because that's what people are doing now. Under Act Ten, everybody's a free agent, so.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Okay, Sue, um, we have, uh, a motion to approve the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen supplemental wages for the teacher employee group. Will you please take the vote?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
And Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes Sue eight zero one. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Reincheck. Moving on to policy, uh, given by Mr. Baumgart.
Okay. Again, we have a number of, uh, items to deal with in our policies. Um, first in the action area, we have seven different policies to be discussed. I'm going to, as I have often done, hold off on the motion till the end. And if anybody wants one of those extracted and dealt with individually, we can do that. But the majority of these are dealing with technology and the majority of the technology ones are dealing with terminology changes only. So, um, when we did the first readings a month ago, we had, I don't think we had any disputes on, on the tech- technology ones. So, quickly, policy seven five four zero point zero one. Uh, this policy was revised to include language adding, that added regarding, was added regarding privacy that, uh, our staff is being, getting, let me start that over again. The fact that they are not allowed or not per, suggested that they use privacy as an issue because this is not their system. So, that is, uh, language that regards privacy, seven five four zero point zero one. Seven five four zero point zero three. Oh, I should have asked if there's any questions on the first one. I'm assuming there are, but, no, okay. Is student education technology acceptable use and safety? This policy has been revised to include a change in the title to student technology acceptable use and safety, replace references to education technology with the words technology resources and language also, uh, to address the code of conduct and privacy. Questions on that one? Seven five four zero point zero four, staff education technology acceptable use and safety. This policy has been revised to include a change in the title to staff technology acceptable use and safety, replace references to the terms education technology with the technology resources, and similarly to the previous one, language added to address conduct, the code of conduct and privacy. Questions? No. Seven five four zero point zero six, electronic mail. This policy has been revised to include a change in title to district-issued staff email account. First paragraph was revised to provide a clear statement of the policy's purpose and to explain that district-issued email is for conducting official business, which may include communicating with colleagues, students, parents, and community members. Language was also added to address storage and retention, including student and public records clarifications. Okay. Then we have seven five four zero point zero seven. This is a new policy, creates a new document specific to students because the students now have, have some content from the staff document. Uh, and the previous one, seven five four zero point zero six, uh, that was not, that was not included in the students. This policy is needed to, because we are issuing email accounts to students parti- partially to facilitate the student's ability to register and log into web services and apps that their teachers are using in the class or for assignments. Questions on that? New policy for students. And eight six zero five, use of electronic wireless communication devices by district employees who operate board-owned or operated vehicles. This policy has been revised to better reflect federal regulations which prohibit the use of handheld mobile communication devices for drivers of vehicles that require a commercial driver's license and while operating on a highway. The policy is revised to remove the reference to highway as the term is confusing as to what is a highway. Also, the phrase mobile telephone, which is used in federal regulations, excludes two-way radios and CBs. The policy revisions include language to permit the use of a two-way radio or a CB that is installed on the buses for communication with the district transportation office or other buses. That one is a little bit meatier, but it's, again, pretty straightforward. And policy nine seven zero zero, relations with non-school affiliated groups. This policy has been revised to provide districts with policy language concerning the use of school districts identifying marks such as logos, mascots, et cetera, on independent organizations' materials and advocacy for or against a referendum question. Several districts have inquired about such policy language in the wake of confusion or inappropriate allegations levied against districts for campaigning in favor of referendum question, of a referendum question, when in fact it was a third party, this is, this is a history, I guess I'm reading to you, a third party using the district's name logo to create an appearance of an official, uh, communication. Districts should note, however, that adopting this revision does not constitute registering or protecting the district's name or logos. Rather, the purpose is to deny any connection and to make it clear of the district's position on the issue. Uh, March twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, the policy committee, uh, changed some of the language in the, in the first paragraph as discussed as a result of that meeting. Questions?
Mr. McCaffrey?
Um, and I should have caught this before, but, um, on eighty-six oh five?
Thank you. Yes, what?
Um.
Let me get, let me get caught up there.
Yeah, I know. That's right. Um, we're going to allow our employees to fool around with their Google Maps app and not use a wireless Bluetooth headphone. Is that what you're telling me? So, for instance, I will, no driver may use a handheld mobile telephone anytime except for direction navigation purposes.
Yes?
Most of that is like this, though. Driving around, oh, I gotta reorientate. We're gonna allow them to do that because that's what the policy says.
Yes.
Okay. That would, that's a problem for me.
Yes, okay.
Because that is the definition of distracted driving. So, what we're saying in this policy is that is less distracting than using a Bluetooth earpiece to talk on a phone and not touch your phone.
No driver may use a handheld mobile telephone anytime ex- oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So, it is, it is including it, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to vote against that in the policy.
Well, I, you know, I appreciate you're gonna have to vote against something, Mr. McCaffrey. You, you can join the club here.
[laughing]
Is it the same one, though, that we're voting against? I don't know. We'll find out.
I don't care. We'll see.
Interesting. I don't think you two have ever had any interest in policies before.
[laughing] Well, I have interest in policy all the time, Mr. Baumgart.
We have an interest in you.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, you know, I think the only really acceptable use of a handheld device is for navigation. I mean, essentially, what a person uses, I mean, people use it all the time for navigation simply because they're not talking on it, they're listening to it for directions. They're, you know, you put in your direction device, you set it down, you can be stopped.
That's only if they're using it that way, though.
Well, I mean, that, you're saying they can't use it that way at all if you ban them from using it that way. This way you can say responsibly, if they're responsibly using it, they can use it, right?
Well, we could say that same about the Bluetooth headset. If you're responsible in using it, then you can use it.
Bluetooth headsets are a little different because you have an ongoing conversation. I probably shouldn't do this going back and forth between board members. Mr. Chair, Bluetooth head members, uh, headsets, um, would involve an ongoing conversation which itself is distracting, whereas, you know, a map navigation device is not the same case because you're not conversing with the ma- map navigation device.
Mr. McCaffrey?
But you may be looking at the map. I don't know what that commercial is. If you look down at your phone, you travel, what, two football fields? So, if you are looking at the map on your handheld navigation device, um, it's like texting. Look away from the phone. You look away from what you're, for president.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah. I would, I would just say that there is an acceptable use of a mobile device as a navigation device. I don't think there is an acceptable use of a mobile device as a telephone or communication device because it's too distracting. As, as a navigation device, you can listen to the directions. You don't have to look at it.
And I can't believe you're still holding it in your hand while you're doing that.
You're certainly trying not to. I, usually you lay it on the seat.
Well, I would hope so, but that doesn't mean they are. And.
Well, it's a handheld device, but it's not being held by anybody's hand.
You would hope so.
Well, I do hope so, yes.
Right. So.
And as we have in the past, this was read to us a month ago for observations to be given to the policy committee so that we can work on them tonight.
And I already apologized that I missed that. But thanks for the reminder.
I will say I'm impressed that Mr. McCaffrey is willing to step out there and object to something that he's very much concerned about. And I might just join him in the noble, just, uh, just so he doesn't feel alone.
Well, this is, this has, just a matter of process. This has been grouped together into one. I'm, I'm gonna deal with that.
Potentially one batch, so.
Yeah, I said earlier that if anybody wants something extracted from the group of seven, we can quite simply do that. And I haven't made the motion yet.
Fair enough.
I don't think I did.
No, you haven't.
No, you didn't.
Okay. And I'm going to ask if anybody wants something extracted from the seven.
I would love, um.
To take eight, six oh five off and then handle it separately?
Extract it. Yes, yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want, do you want it redone or reworded or you just want it completely dropped, the issue?
Well, we're gonna take it out and vote on it.
We're gonna vote on it separately.
Yeah, right.
We're gonna vote on it separately, Barb.
Yes, I know that, but, you want any?
And that would be, yeah.
Well, that'll, that'll, they'll still come up.
Right.
Okay.
I think.
Maybe.
Okay.
Maybe we'll just vote on it.
Then, I am going to make a motion that, and as action items, we will vote for seventy-five forty point zero one, seventy-five forty point zero three, seventy-five forty point zero four, seventy-five forty point zero six, seventy-five forty point zero seven, and ninety-seven hundred. I move for approval of those six.
Is there a second to that?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Brusink? Discussion on those six? Mr. O'Brien?
I didn't move to, to pull ninety-seven hundred out because I didn't figure it'd matter. Okay, so why take the extra time to pull it out? But I, and also, I don't think ninety-seven hundred is all that badly worded. I appreciate the policy committee taking the time to go back and revisit it. Um, my main concern with ninety-seven hundred as it stands today is, um, you, I think as I said in my email to Mr. Baumgart, which I understand you shared with the committee and I appreciate that, is that we should be careful about trying to make sure in policy that we, um, state in policy what we can enforce and what, and stay away from things that we can't enforce. And, um, uh, this tends to drift over that line a little bit. It, it, it tends to put in, um, attempts to constrain people that you probably can't constrain, really, uh, in an effort to make it clear that we're not endorsing them. We kind of step over the line a little bit. It's not enough to make me want to pull it out of the agenda item, but it is enough for me to vote no on the whole package just because of that one thing. Um, but they're all gonna pass anyway, so it won't matter. So, it's, it's a given item. I just want to make the point, and I laid it on your desk today, I think policy's an important committee.
Mm-hmm.
It really is. And through policy, you can avoid doing bad things. And, uh, I laid your desk, uh, "High school warns parents against cheering at graduation or pay dollars." This is the type of bad things that you hope policy will prevent people from doing because it, it, they kind of embarrass themselves when they're planning to fine parents at the graduation ceremony and the police officers are saying, we're got, we're not gonna fine anybody. And, um, I feel a little bit about uncomfortable with ninety-seven hundred, but I think it was worded, attempt to do a good enough job on putting it together where it's not all that offensive. If I thought it was, I'd pull it out and put, you know, attack it in that way. But reality is, we should always stay away from things that we really can't enforce. And what happens is, the people that you don't want using your names and logos are gonna use them anyway. And the people that you've, may not have a problem with using them, they won't use them because they're afraid to. You know, so it's kind of like, you don't know if you're really helping yourself with these types of policies, but I think, you know, that's my concern.
Appreciate your response to that. And, you know, we have some differences of opinion on that. We've also had conversation with law firms to make sure that we, we are staying within the boundaries. And the response is yes.
And it was both with Beelow Vetter and with Neola, Joe?
That's correct, yeah. And, and Neola, that's correct, yes. So, yes.
I would just say it wasn't so much a legal issue. It's just what is the right?
I know.
It's what's the right thing. And, and, um, you know, we, we can do a lot of things. I mean, sure, it's legal for them to say they want to fine people at the graduation ceremony. In fact, they did say it's legal, but is it a good idea? You know, that type of thing. So, we just gotta look at the public perception about, are we partners with our community or are we trying to govern our community?
Well, we were even, we were even encouraged to be careful by the law firms and, you know, not to be autocratic about this.
Yeah, yeah. Any other discussion on these six items that have been moved before us? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck?
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Bill?
Okay. Then I will be making, lost my place just a minute. I will be making a motion to approve revisions to policy eight six zero five, use of electronic wireless communication devices by district employees, board-owned or operated vehicles. I so move.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mrs. Reincheck? Discussion? Mrs. Reincheck?
Yeah, I, I don't think I would vote yes either. I don't know if there's some way we can say, um, that it can't be used unless it's mounted for dictation for navigation purposes or something like that. I mean, I, I think the whole thing is when it's in your hand, then your hand is not on the wheel and therefore that's unsafe. But I know we can't get, I mean, it could be, our paragraph could be this long trying to say what we can and can't do, but I think it all has to do with when it's in your hand. That's the problem. So, if it's mounted, and it may be if it's on voice dictation and it's telling you where to turn, I mean, that's one thing. But I don't know how to say that in a different way, but I can't say yes with it written the way it is. way, but I can't say yes with it written the way it is.
I want to ask, Joe, if we got these wording directly from Neola this way?
This right of the page.
As worded?
Right. Okay, I just want to check that.
Mr. McCaffrey?
You could solve it by adding hands-free navigational device.
Solving, I'm saying...
Solving the problem of having it in your hand.
Oh.
It's got to be hands-free. Your hand would not be on the phone.
Except for hands-free direction navigation purposes?
Except for the use of a hands-free navigation device or app, because most of them are apps on the phone.
Are you making an amendment?
Well, that would be the only way you could fix it. I mean, I could amend it like that if, you know, but I haven't wordsmithed it, so I mean...
Try it.
Beyond, I mean, that's what it would be. No driver may use a handheld mobile telephone anytime, and then there would be, probably be the end of that sentence, and then the use of a hands-free navigation device or app would be acceptable? I don't know. I haven't really had a lot of time to think about how you would word that, but...
Yeah, I think you'd say the use of a mobile device as a hands-free navigation device is acceptable.
Would be acceptable, yeah, as long as it's hands-free. My concern is I don't want it in their hand.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
I don't think anybody's really disagreeing with that.
Completely understand, but I know how I operate my Google Maps and how most people do.
Mr. Cook?
For the sake of carrying this discussion, to actually put it in as an amended, could you say except for hands-free direction navigation purposes and then...
Yeah, I think it's, yes. Yeah, it would be acceptable. We just need the hands-free in there so we know we don't want them fooling around with their phones, because that's what the Google Maps is on.
Hands-free, yeah.
So move the amendment.
Is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion on the amendment? If not, then what we'll take a roll call vote on is just the amendment? Making the change? Yes, Bill?
No, I'm not going to change it. You have a very big question mark on your face.
I thought it was, I'm sorry, I thought it was Mr. McCaffrey that was making the amendment.
Actually, Kurt did.
He made the amendment.
He just complained. He just complained.
Actually, Kurt made the motion, and Pat seconded it. And just to be clear...
Go ahead.
Do you have the wording down, Sue? Would you please reread that?
No, I don't have it.
Why don't we get it from Dr. Cook?
Dr. Cook probably has it written explicitly.
After the word "for," "except for," insert hands-free direction navigation purposes.
That's in the fourth line in the first paragraph. The green word says "except for." Yep.
Line four?
Except for hands-free...
Except for hands-free, okay.
...direction navigation purposes.
Yep.
Everybody clear on that? Any further discussion on that amendment? Okay, so this is a vote just on making an amendment to 8605. Sue, will you please take the roll call vote on that?
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Barbara Brzezink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, the amendment?
Now I will move for...
We still have that motion in effect.
Yeah, it is in effect, that's correct.
Any further discussion on the original motion with the amendment added in at this time? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Diane Voight.
Aye.
Barbara Brzezink.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Deeds.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Bill?
Okay, that was seven. We've got nine left. These are first readings to be read now, reviewed at the policy committee meeting on May 17th, brought back to you in June. So, we have discussion item first, revision to Policy 75, again, a lot of technology stuff in here. Revision to Policy 7540, computer technology network and Internet acceptable use and safety. The proposed revision to this policy included change in the title to "technology" and language added regarding a "technology advisory committee," a "district technology plan," and expectations of privacy when using district technology resources. Also, the definition of social media, so it is clear what an individual may be authorized to use for either work or school purposes. And I want to point out, about the middle of the first page, you're going to find the discussion about the district technology plan and a "technology advisory committee." Suggest you go over that and understand we will be putting those. We've already talked with Steve Schulman about this, by the way. I should have said that in all these technology policies, we've been through Steve on them too, so...
Any discussion, any questions, comments? Ms. Voight?
Well, that is in the works. I mean, it's not done yet.
If this passes, so this is...
Yeah, basically, it's required.
This is the first reading of this policy. So we typically have two readings. We have a first reading at a full, you know, so first goes to committee. We have a first reading at the full board meeting. It goes back to committee, so we would encourage anyone who has any comments or questions or concerns on any of the next seven items to get in touch with Bill, and he can coordinate that so that we have our, when we have our second committee meeting on this, we can kind of go through that. And then we bring it for a second reading to the full board. So this is first, these are all first readings, Bill, correct?
That's correct. Okay. Policy 7540.02, district webpage. The proposed revisions to this policy include a change in title to web content, services, and apps, and language has been added to address the Office of Civil Rights' concern about website accessibility and compliance with the ADA.
Any questions, concerns, discussion? Okay, Bill?
Third one. Policy 5136, personal communication devices other than cellular phones. Changes in this policy include a statement that the definition of personal communication devices is found in Bylaw 0100 has been added as the opening sentence to this policy. The definition of personal communication device that was included after option A has been deleted. This is one of those policies where we had to pick pieces out of it and references personal communication devices throughout. The remainder of the policy have been replaced with the simple "PCD," which is also referenced in the first sentence. So it's just cleaning it up and trying to make it possible to read it.
And we might want to clarify, why are we pulling out cellphones? And that's primarily because we have another policy?
Because they're covered elsewhere.
Specifically on it, so, yeah.
Okay. 5136.02, cellular phones in the classroom. Changes in this policy include adding language about cellphones on buses, prohibiting cellphones in classrooms and gymnasiums for purposes of utilizing the camera capabilities, and further defining sex as sexual orientation slash transgender identity. To keep this policy in line with Policy 5136, personal communication devices and other than cellular phones. So this is the other policy that deals with the cellphone part of it. Okay? Policy 5136.01, electronic equipment. Changes in this policy include a reference to the definition of technology resources in Bylaw 010100. Added to the first paragraph, clarification of when students are prohibited from using technology resources and cameras are replaced throughout by "technology resources" because that term includes SLR and DSLR. That's the cameras, and digital cameras. And there are other types of technology resources that can make digital images like cellphones.
Any questions? Turn.
Policy 7530.02, staff use of personal communication devices. This policy has been revised regarding use of devices while driving. And I honestly don't remember what that change was. I'm going to quick look. It wasn't the highway thing either. Maybe it was. Joe, was there something different on this one? I don't remember either. We had so many of these come through. Wait, I'm looking.
We did, in this policy, select options that address the safe and appropriate use of personal communication devices, including cellphones while driving. This does apply to staff who have responsibilities around our district where they use their own personal vehicles, and they're not driving one of the district vehicles.
Okay. Any questions, discussion on that? Okay, Bill?
Policy 8300, continuity of organizational operations plans. This is, now we're jumping away from technology, and I think, Joe, if you could give us a paragraph on this one, because this is big stuff.
Yeah, the, Neola recommends, in our conversations around school safety and crisis management, they're talking about creating a plan that addresses some of the more catastrophic what-ifs that would happen within a school district. So what if an elementary school were to have a tornado that made that elementary school go offline for a period of time until it could be repaired? What if there was an active shooter situation that happened at a board meeting or at a cabinet meeting in the district where administrators were targeted? Trying to, worst-case scenario, plan so that you can put on paper how operations would continue beyond what our school crisis work does. I mean, we have a plan to manage events in the district, weather events and other type. This would be more formal. What do you do two days out, three days out, a week out, so that you can maintain operations in your organization?
So this is a policy that says we're going to establish this.
Questions, discussion? Lot to that.
Okay. And Policy 8305, dealing with information. This new policy includes reference to the definitions in Bylaw 0100 for technology resources and information resources. In the second paragraph, the board determines the three classifications of data information, requires all individuals who may be granted access to information resources to certify annually that they will comply with the established security protocols, requires the superintendent shall set forth the internal controls necessary to provide for the collection, classification, retention, access, and security of district information, and developing procedures to be followed if there is an unauthorized release or breach of information collected and retained by the district, and finally, requires disciplinary consequence if an employee, student, or other vendor or contractor does not adhere to the requirements of the policy. It's almost as long as the policy. Again, this is a pretty heavy one, directed to us from Neola, I believe, Joe, and it's one of those things that's supposed to be done.
Any concerns, questions to bring back to the committee?
No. Okay. Then, we have one of a more human nature. Food services. Page, Policy 8500, food services. The revisions include references to the USDA, smart snacks, nutrition, information, alternative meals, bad debt, and negative account balances. So that's what, again, this, we're getting this from the government, and we will be in compliance with this.
Any questions or concerns?
Okay. These nine items that we just covered were approved at the April 17th policy committee meeting. This was the first reading of them. Will be reviewed again at the May, my date's mixed up, 15th, I think, is the date.
Yes.
The May 15th meeting, brought to the June board meeting for approval. If you have any issues or questions with these nine, please get them to me before the 15th, at the 15th, when you come to the meeting. Thank you.
Anything else, Bill?
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Bill. That actually does finish our committee reports. We'll move on to other business at this time. Mrs. Reinacek?
Thank you. I just wanted to say this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we have a great letter on our desks from a very appreciative parent. And she just was praising the education that she's gotten in this district and mentioning some of our great teachers. And it just reminded me, I should have said something during our committee report, that we just appreciate all of the great teachers we have in our district. And it was also Administrative Assistance Week a couple weeks ago, and so we thank you, Sue, for all that you do for us as well. So just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
Any other business, anything that might be added to a full Board of Education agenda or one of the committees? And if you think of those ideas in the meantime, you can always reach out to those committee chairs, so... I believe we do not have a need for executive session, is that correct, Dr. Gray?